Hi everyone, welcome to Verandare's YouTube channel. And we are looking at a special session on SBA Clerk exam. On 25th February. So, February 15th is the first day of the exam. It is a sure answer. So, SBA Clerk main exam focused on some questions. Exam is a sure 100% probability. Or 100% chance of some questions that we are discussing. And then there are some explanations. These are some daily topics explained in the content. Then you will see it and understand it. Now, some more questions that we have already discussed. Or if we are important. The most important question is the exam is a sure answer. There are a lot of questions. Some new questions. And you can ask some questions. All of them are special sessions that we are doing today. Okay, so first question. Let us start. I am going to tell you about the February 15th question. Okay, February 15th is the first day of the exam. Until then, some important questions that we are discussing. Okay, SBA Clerk is not only for this. It is also useful for SEC and railway. Now, we are looking at the exam of SBA Clerk main exam. That is why we focus on it. We have focused on it a lot. However, these questions are effective for SEC and PSC and railway. Okay, now let us look at the video. The first question is, what is the maximum retail price of Bharat rice per kilogram? Okay, we are looking at the government brand Bharat. This Bharat rice is per kilogram, how much maximum retail price? Or MRP is what? This is an important question. We usually ask questions like this. We ask questions like this. But these are the topics that we have to study in bank exams. Okay, what is the answer? Today's daily question. What is the answer? rupees 29. 1 kilo is 29 rupees. This Bharat rice brand is given by the government. Okay, rupees 29. As it is, 5 kilo and 10 kilo of this Bharat rice is given. 29 rupees is the price per kilo. Okay, if you ask the rate. Then there is the name of this rice. Okay, Bharat rice. The government brand is Bharat. In such a way, all things are different. Okay, fertilizer is here. Such a lot of new things are changed. And each of them has the name of this Bharat. The same is the name of the rice. The price is Bharat. It is easy to study in the market. Okay, 29 rupees is the price per kilo. That is, 5 kilo and 10 kilo of this is provided. Okay, next question. A question is asked. A question is asked. As it is, which country has an embassy? LNG as a transportation fuel in medium and heavy commercial vehicles is a part of the country. And then we have an Indian Energy Week. It was on February 2. February 6. February 9. We have an Indian Energy Week. This is why the Prime Minister Gova. Sorry, the Prime Minister Narendra Modi visited the country. A lot of development projects were started. And in India, alcohol electrolyser was started. This is what we saw in the first day of the exam. So, Energy Week was on February 6 to February 9. So, this Energy Week is related. LNG transportation fuel in medium and heavy commercial vehicles is a program. It was initiated. This report is called the Indian think tank. It is called the Indian think tank. It was started on 20th November. The chairman is Prime Minister Narendra Modi. CEO is BVR Subramaniam. Okay, 20th November is what is called the Indian think tank. So, this is what is called the Indian think tank. The embassy is also included in this report. Okay, this is the question. Which country is it? Lithuania? Spain? Austria? Poland? Netherlands? Okay, which country is it? It is called the Netherlands. Netherlands. Okay, N4 is called the Netherlands. Now, the market is LPG. Sorry, LNG. There is also an N. LNG. Okay, this N is called the Netherlands. Mainly, the N is called the Netherlands. N4 is called the Netherlands. The market. So, what is the answer? The Netherlands embassy is called the Netherlands. This is what is called the Netherlands. This is what is called the Netherlands. So, this is the question. We have an Indian Energy Week. Okay, Govele. Now, we have an Indian Energy Week. A lot of energy projects were started. The infrastructure was started. Who launched it? Who inaugurated it? It is called Narendra Modi. Then, as it is, the Indian hydrogen alkaline electrolyser. Where is it located? Who brought it? Who is the BPCL? Bharat Petroleum Corporation Limited. Okay, this is Govele. This is the alkaline electrolyser. This is the alkaline electrolyser. All of these questions are here. The Netherlands is the answer to this question. Okay. Next question. The Union Cabinet chaired by Prime Minister Narendra Modi has given its approval for signing and ratification of bilateral investment treaty between India and which country? Right, Prime Minister Narendra Modi was chairing a program. Bilateral investment treaty is the name of the program. The two companies have signed the cooperation. The chairman, the chairman of the meeting is Prime Minister Narendra Modi. Okay, which country is it? This is what is called the bilateral treaty. Okay, which country is it? UAE or France? Italy, Germany, USA? This is the answer. Union Cabinet. Or the UK. UAE is the answer. So, UAE is included in the treaty. The treaty is called bilateral investment treaty. Two countries have invested in this treaty. The signature is on India and UAE. Okay, these are the questions that we have a sure chance. So, India and UAE have a bilateral treaty. Who chaired the cabinet meeting? How do you answer? Who is Prime Minister Narendra Modi? Okay, now, a question is asked. If you ask it in this way. You will get 3 to 4 questions. Okay, I am discussing 25 questions today. Then, you will get one. 2 to 3 questions. You will get 75 questions. Then, you will get beneficial. Okay, I will say that if we count 25 or 20. Then, you will get 60 to 75 questions. Okay, now, let us see this. Next question. Which country approved the sale of 31 MQ9B armed drones to India at estimated cost of 3.99 billion US dollars? Which country is it? India has 3.9 billion US dollars. 31 MQ9B armed drones are signed. This is important. India and which country is important? This is important. 31 MQ9B armed drone is provided. The answer is American. USA is the correct answer. Okay, USA is it? India has 3.9 billion USD. 31 MQ9B armed drones are provided. India and USA are involved in this treaty. Agreement. Okay, 31 high altitude, long endurance, or hail. This is the full form of hail. Very important. What is it? High altitude. Okay, high altitude, long endurance is what is called hail. The name of hail is unarmed armed drone. Okay. This is the name of hail. The full form of hail is high altitude, long endurance. It is a category. India and USA are involved in 3.9 billion USD. 31 MQ9B armed drones are provided. Okay, USA is what is given. Next question. First, survey vessel large. A ship is called. Survey vessel large. S V L. Survey vessel large ship. Okay, a ship is called. Survey vessel large ship. This was commissioned recently. Our defense minister Rajnath Singh commissioned this vessel. Rajnath Singh commissioned this. Who is present? Our defense minister Rajnath Singh is present. This is the question. The name of the ship commissioned is the question. INS Sandhai? INS Trishul? INS Kamatra? INS Satpura? INS Ganga? This is an option. This is an option. You have seen the news. But we have commissioned Rajnath Singh. Rajnath Singh is present. We commissioned Rajnath Singh. If you ask the survey vessel large. INS Sandhai is the answer. The INS Sandhai. And another name is Yard 325. Sandhai has another name. Yard. Yard 325. Okay, where is it? This is commissioned. Rajnath Singh is present. This is what is called INS Sandhai. This is what is called INS Sandhai. Do you know about commission and decommissioning? Okay. Next, India has visa access to just how many nations in the world? Right, India has no visa. How many countries have a visa? Or other countries have travel pass? Or access? Okay, how many countries have a visa? If you have no visa. Go to some countries. Then, how many countries do we go to in India? Okay, 62 is the answer. That is, Henley's passport index. Or the strongest passport. Powerful passport. The ranking is here. Henley Passport Index is a ranking. By this ranking, India's rank is 8th. That means, the most powerful passport in the world is our Indian passport. 80th most powerful passport in the world is our Indian passport. What is powerful? Powerful passport is what is powerful? Without visa, we can send 62 countries to India. Okay, recently, we saw. A new country. If India's citizen has no visa. We saw a country. This was Iran. News came from February. Iran, we cannot do anything. If we have no visa, we can travel to Iran. Or maybe. It is possible. Okay, India can go to 62 countries. That is why, if we have no visa to India. That is why, this passport index has an 8th rank in India. Okay, then, what is it? 62 countries have got it. India's ranking has got it. As it is, recently, India has granted visa-free access. Which is the answer? Iran. Okay, these are the questions. This is what is called the answer. Okay. Next question. Which insurance company has appointed Venkata Chalam H as its new chief executive officer and managing director? This is what is called. Who is it? Recently, sorry. Venkata Chalam H is what is called the new insurance company's chief executive. Or CEO, or managing director. MDN CEO. This is what is called the insurance company's name. Venkata Chalam H is the question. This is Tata AIA Life Insurance Company. We have heard of it before. Venkata Chalam H. As it is, Navin Tahilyani. This is what we have seen. So, Tata AIA Life Insurance Company's new MDN CEO is Venkata Chalam H. Okay, this is what is called digital Tata Insurance. Life Insurance is a digital. A man, digital Tata AIA Life Insurance. And the MDN CEO is Navin Tahilyani. Okay, Navin Tahilyani. These are the names. Venkata Chalam H is Navin Tahilyani. Insurance company is what is called the Tata AIA Life Insurance Company. This is the answer. If you ask the question, how many new questions do you have? The name is what is called the insurance company. This is what is called digital Tata AIA. AIA Life Insurance MDN CEO is Navin Tahilyani. If you ask the question, how many new questions do you have? Okay. Next question. Which year was identified as year of naval civilians to improve administration efficiency, well-being of naval civilians by addressing all facets of civilian HR management in time-bound manner? Right, we have civilians. Okay, naval civilians. Administration efficiency, well-being. They have been done for a year. Year of naval civilians. They have been identified for a year. Okay, this is the year of naval civilians. This is the question. Very important. Most important question. Very, very, very important question. Okay, year of naval civilians is what? This is the year of international military. 2003. This is what is called naval civilians. This is what is called naval civilians. 2024 is the answer. Okay, naval civilians. Well-being is what is called naval civilians. This is a program. Or a year of naval civilians. This is 2024. Okay. The 2024 as year of naval civilians. What is it? We have not talked about it. Their administration, their well-being. Their efficient operation. This is what is called the year of identification. Okay, now, let us look. India has paid how many million to United Nations regular budget for joining the owner role of 36 member states? That is what we have said. The United Nations is the regular budget. Right, many of the member nations in the United Nations have spent so much money. Or whether it is India's member nations, how much United Nations has given. Then, if you ask. A lot of development is required. It is a contribution of the member nations. And recently, United Nations contributed a particular amount. Then, what is it? The owner role of India has come. The owner role of United Nations is a particular. India's name is written. Okay, already 36 member states have the owner role. Now, India has given a certain amount. India has also come to the owner role. Okay, then, how much is the amount given? How much is it? 33 billion. If you ask the question. 32.89 million USD. India contributed 32.89. 33 million dollars. India has obtained a particular owner role. A particular owner role is written in India. Okay. This is what is called owner role. 36 member states. And member nations. Okay, this is what is called India. The amount is 32.89. Or approximately. 33 million. 33 million USD is the correct answer. Okay. Next, some chances to ask. This amount is what is called the country? This is what is called the country? Okay. Which edition of webinar of National Good Governance Webinar Series 2023-24 was held with the theme promoting excellence in sports and wellness through KLO India Scheme? Okay, KLO India University. Where is it? We have talked about it. Okay, the fourth edition. The third edition. This is what we have already discussed. Okay. So, what is the answer? This year, KLO India Scheme. KLO Youth India. KLO India Scheme. This is what is called the webinar. The name of the webinar is National Good Governance Webinar Series 2023-24. Okay, this is the theme. Promoting excellence in sports and wellness. Promoting excellence in sports and wellness is what is called the webinar. The name of the theme is National Good Governance Webinar Series. As it is, this is part of KLO India Scheme. This is what is called a webinar series. This is what is called a webinar series. 2024 webinar series. What is the edition? Do you know? 25? 25? Or 20? Today's topic is to buy it. We can do it. Hands to the floor. 20th webinar series is this 2024. Okay, 2024. 20th session. Okay, this is what is called KLO India. This is part of the KLO India Scheme. This is what is called the webinar. If you ask the question, what is the theme? The theme is promoting excellence in sports and wellness. This is what is called the theme. Okay, this is what is called the webinar. We have the Secretary of Department of Administrative Reforms and Public Grievances in the secretary. Okay, this is what is called the webinar. Chairman or head of the webinar. Next question. What is the theme for World Cancer Day? World Cancer Day. Let us look. What is World Cancer Day? February 4. February 4 is World Cancer Day. It is happening. Then, there is a theme. 2024 World Cancer Day. What is the question? 2024 is a long, big theme. Keywords. Closing the care gap. The care. Care gap. Close the care gap. As it is, everyone deserves this care. When we look at the keywords. So, I wait. This is the theme. The option is close the care gap. Everyone deserves access to cancer. February 4 is World Cancer Day. It is happening. Next, in February 2024, which country has announced a visa waiver program for Indians visiting the country for tourism? That is, tourism is part of it. Which country is it? Recently, India has granted visa-free access. We have discussed the question. There is a powerful passport. The index is called. And then, I just said out of the box. It is the same question. Which country is it? Recently, February 2024. No visa. This country is allowed to travel to India. This is part of tourism. This is part of tourism promotion. Which country is it? Iran. Okay, Iran is what has granted India's citizens visa-free access. Okay. So, February 4 was effective. The date is here. Our World Cancer Day is the 2nd. This is what is called. This is what is called access. February 4 is what is called. India has granted travel access. Next, who inaugurated the National Arogia Fair 2024 in New Delhi? In New Delhi, this is what is called National Arogia Fair 2024 Edition. 2024 inaugurated. Who is it? Which is it? Arogia Fair. Okay, if you ask the question. We can choose 2 to 3 options. Health and family chance. Okay, Ayesh's chance. Because health is related. Health related. So, these two ministries are here. Then, defense ministry has a chance. Not Arogia. Or Arogia Fair. Then, the defense ministry does not do this. The defense ministry does not. Next, Union Tribal Minister. That is not. Next, Union Rural Development. That is not. So, these two are here. We have to look. Health and Family Welfare. Is it Ministry of Ayesh? Ayesh Ministry is the correct answer. Ayesh Ministry is it? Then, the Union Ministry is Sarban and the Sonover. This is what is called the Ayesh Ministry. The Union Ministry is it? Ayesh Ministry is it? Arogia Fair 2024 program. It is inaugurated. Which state is it? Or where is it? This Arogia Fair is happening. New Delhi. Okay, if you ask. This is a health-related fair. It is in New Delhi. The name of the fair is Arogia Fair 2024. It is in New Delhi. Ministry of Ayesh. The name of the person who inaugurated it is Sarban and the Sonover. Okay, these are the questions. What is it? For people to see the benefits of Indian traditional medicines. As it is, people are aware of this. This is what is called National Arogia Fair 2024. It is conducted. The answer is Sarban and the Sonover. It is inaugurated. Okay, as it is. The fair is. It is the Ayesh campaign. It is part of the campaign. Har Dinh, Har Ger Ayesh. Every day, every house has Ayesh. So, you understand? Union Ministry of Ayesh is what is conducted. Or inaugurated. Har Dinh, Har Ger Ayesh is the name of the campaign. How many questions? 4 questions. This is what is called the answer. Okay. The answer is in New Delhi. Next, who inaugurated and laid foundation stone for development projects with worth over 1,330 crore in Vegeth Bharat, Vegeth Goa, 2024 program in Goa? 2024 Vegeth Bharat, Vegeth Goa. 2024. If Goa is completely established. Or infrastructure is well completed. This is a program. It is an initiative. Vegeth Bharat, Vegeth Goa, 2024. So, Govele. Who is the chairman? Prime Minister Narendra Modi visited. A lot of development projects were inaugurated. Okay, now, we have the answers. Who is the 1330 crore rupees development project? Prime Minister. Prime Minister Narendra Modi is the one who visited Goa. Goa was visited. This is what is called the program. 2020. India Energy Week. India Energy Week is on February. 2024. 2024 is the Indian Energy Week. This is what is called the development. Initiative campaign is Vegeth Bharat, Vegeth Goa, 2024. How much budget is sanctioned? 1330 crore rupees. This is what is called development project. Who is inaugurated? Prime Minister Narendra Modi. Okay. Then, as it is. Sea Survival Training Centers. Govele has taken them. Waste Management. Water Treatment Plan. 100 TPD waste treatment plan. As it is, 100 TPD. Water Treatment Plan. These are what is called. Visiting. A lot of development projects were gone. This is what we have already discussed. The question is, where is it? It is what is believed. The amount is 1330 crore rupees. This is what is called development project. Sanctioned. Total amount. Okay. As it is, Sea Survival Training Center is started. Where is it? Govele is it. Sea Survival Training Center. Okay. Next, what is the GDP growth for FY25 predicted by RBI NPC? NPC is the Monetary Policy Committee. Okay, RBI. Bi-monthly Monetary Policy Committees are there. And February was there. Part of it is GDP rate. So, we have talked about it. The rate is 6.5%. Okay. Now, what is the real GDP growth? How much? RBI predicted. RBI's Monetary Policy Meeting. India's GDP growth. How much? RBI's prediction. Do you know? Seven percent is the answer. Okay. The seven percent is the answer. RBI predicts. All institutions, all banking institutions predict. S&amp;P Global and Fitz rating. There are a lot of ratings. Okay, all of them, lastly, a table. If you sort it out, we will revise it. Okay, this GDP growth rate is not checked. But we will surely check the bank exam. Similarly, in this season, recently, in February, bimonthly monetary policy committee's part, a lot of ratings were submitted. The ratings, if you ask, we will tell you. Now, let us see. GDP growth rate is how is it? RBI's prediction. How is it? Seven percent is the answer. Okay. Next, look. Who among the following was honored with the outstanding businesswoman of the year? 2023? It is 2024. So, it is 2023 years. The analysis of the complete year is done. 2023, outstanding businesswoman of the year is chosen. Who got the award? This is the outstanding businesswoman of the year 2023 award. This is the woman who got the award. Do you know? Dr. Bina Modi. Dr. Bina Modi is the one who got the award. You have heard the name of Modi. Yes, I have heard it. PR combo is present. Deepa Bhannara is present. Okay, the carpooling tax code is what? Do you know? The carpooling tax code was obtained through posthumous. Bharat Ratna Award was obtained in 2024. That is, the option is the carpooling tax code. Bharat Ratna, 2024, five people got it. In 1924, the first year of Bharat Ratna. In 1924, this is... This is the one that Bharat Ratna completed. 2024, the first year of Bharat Ratna. Okay. In 1924? Okay, 2024, the first year of Bharat Ratna. There is one, this is the carpooling tax code. The answer is, who is the woman of the year award? Bina Modi is the one who got the award. Okay, Modi Enterprises' chairperson is Bina Modi. The president is the woman of the year. Outstanding businesswoman of the year is the one who got the award. Okay, who is the one who gave the award? The defense minister is Rashnath Singh. He presented the award. Okay. Next, look. Union Road Transport and Highway Ministry inaugurated 6 to 6.92 crore for the construction of package one encompassing the Sarli Huri section of NH 913 frontier highway in which state? Which state is it? This is Sarli Huri. A road construction part of frontier highway. Which state is it? Union Road Transport and Highway Ministry is the one who inaugurated it. Who is the Union Road Transport and Highway Union Minister? Nidin Gattkar. Nidin Gattkar is the Union Road Transport and Highway Minister. But, what is the question? This is the one, which Indian state is the frontier highway in? What is its name? Sarli Huri, NH 913 is the highway's name. The amount is 6 to 6.92. 6 to 6.92 crore is the amount sanctioned. Which state is it? Harnajal Pradesh is the correct answer. Okay, this is the highway in northeastern state. This highway is in the northeast state. Harnajal Pradesh. Okay, the name is clear. It is the budget. How much is it? 6 to 6.92 crore. The highway's name is Sarli Huri Sanction of NH 913 Frontier Highway. Okay. Next, look. National Technical Textile Mission, NTTM, has been approved with the outlay of how many crore from financial year 2021 and valid up to 2026 February 30... Sorry, March 31. Okay, that is the national technical textile mission's part. How much is the financial year sanctioned? If approved, it is the one that is asked. Do you know how much? 1,480 crore. It is the 8th one, National Technical Textile Mission. This is the full form of NTTM. National Technical Textile Mission. Mission, not mission. Okay, 1,480 crore is the mission. 2021, this financial year is... How much? 2026 is very good. The year is 1,480. The government is sanctioned. Which is the national technical textile mission's part? Okay. Next, look. The fourth foreign office consultation between India and which country was held in New Delhi? Okay, which regime is included in the fourth foreign office consultation? The 4th edition is the foreign office consultation. Which regime is included in the New Delhi? That is the question. Okay, foreign. Okay, foreign. Clear. Foreign. Fourth edition. Foreign. All four are present. Okay, foreign. Then, the fourth edition. The answer is Portugal. Por. Foreign. For. Por. If you look at the question, we will get the code. Remember, the fourth foreign office consultation is held. It is held in India and Portugal. 4th edition, foreign office consultation. Where is it? In New Delhi. It is held. Okay. If you ask, these two regimes have political relations. They are deepened. It is so that there is trade. There is bilateral trade, investment. Let us strengthen it. Even science and technology share. Defense technologies share. India and Portugal are present. There are a lot of sectors. Both regimes have their own technology. And our regimes. This is for sharing. The energy sector. There are a lot of energy, technology sharing. Sharing or service sharing is done. This is the foreign office consultation. It is the 4th edition of foreign office consultation. It is held in New Delhi. Who is present? India and Portugal are present. How is Portugal clear? Foreign consultation. Now, foreign. That is, foreign is F O R. That is, the 4th edition is remembered. Okay, this is foreign. This is connected. P O R. Por. Por for Portugal. This is clear. Okay. Next, what is the report rate decided by RBI MPC meeting held on February? We are looking at the... What is the RBI monetary policy committee's real GDP growth prediction? It is the one that is asked. Now, the report rate is the one that is asked. How is it? 6.5% is the correct answer. Okay. During which meeting, Food Safety and Standard Authority of India, the FSSAI, has approved various amendments to streamline food safety and standards regulation? What is the 4th edition of the Food Safety and Standard Authority of India? What is the meeting in the 4th? This is the food safety and standards. Some amendments, regulations, some things. The 4th meeting in the FSSA is the question. The answer is the 43rd meeting. This 43... There is no code. You have heard it. Some, we are looking at the 25th KLO India. This is the 25th edition. Now, the 43rd edition of the FSSA. Let us compare it. There were some amendments in the food safety and standards. Some regulations, some amendments were made. This is the 43rd meeting in the FSSA. Okay. This is the meeting. Who is the one who shared it? Who is the one who held it? The union health secretary is Abhurva Chandrayaan. Okay. Abhurva Chandrayaan is the union health secretary. He is the 43rd edition of the FSSA. The 43rd meeting is shared. This is the part of food safety and standards. Some regulations, some amendments were made. The answer, we need the answer. 43. Now, clear. FSSI. FL is present. FL is present. The F is written. Seven is not. Okay, F is written. Seven is not. Seven is the number. 42, four is the R. 40, the number is four. Okay, this is five. This is eight. Seven is the number. If I have 52, I will answer. You will not think. However, if it is 43, there is a four starting. 42, 41, 40. There is a chance to answer. Then, seven is obtained. Where is seven? The F in the F is written. Then, seven is obtained. 43 is added, and seven is obtained. This is the year. This is the year. Next, the 44th edition. Then, we can look again. I have practiced it before. But, now, let us study. To study this exam, we have to look. F is written. Where is seven? 43, 43 is added. 4 plus 3 is 7. Okay, the 43rd meeting in the FSSI is held. There is a food safety and standards. Some things, some amendments were made. Remember. Next, look. Who will be the 50th recipient of Bharat Ratna? The 5th recipient is chosen. Okay, this news is... We can eliminate some options. Okay, who is the one who got the award this year? Carpooling tax code. LK Advan. The rest of the three people this year did not get it. Okay, Ubindra Kumar, Azari, Mukharjik, Naranjadeesh, Mukhin. We are confused. We have seen the carpooling tax code. It is so that LK Advan is present. Whether it is the carpooling tax code or LK Advan. The 5th recipe. The 5th recipe of Bharat Ratna. LK Advan is the carpooling tax code. We are confused. The carpooling tax code is the posthumous award. The posthumous is the one who got the award. But, the LK Advan is the one who got the award. But, it is the 5th recipe. The 5th recipe of Bharat Ratna. Okay. The answer is... Highest civilian award is Bharat Ratna. Okay, the highest civilian award is in Patmasri. Patmasri is the fourth highest civilian award. This is what we said in Daily Current Affairs. Highest civilian award is Bharat Ratna. That is, the 5th person is LK Advan. Okay, this year, five people got it. Okay. Next, look. Who ranked second brand guardianship index 2024? That is, in India, the most valuable brand is listed. The brand guardianship index is known. In India, the world should look. The most powerful CEO, who gets an index. Or who lists an index. This is the brand guardianship index 2024. No matter what the first prize is, we are not in our own country. But, if we look at the world first prize, we will get it. Who is it? Who is it? Mughesh Ambani is the correct answer. Okay, if we look at the world, the second rank is India. The first rank is Mughesh Ambani. The first rank is... Who is the first rank? Huateng Ma is the name of the person. Huateng Ma is the first prize. The second prize is Mughesh Ambani. If we look at India, the first prize is Mughesh Ambani. Okay, the first prize is Huateng. The second prize is Mughesh Ambani. If we look at the world, the brand guardianship index is the award. Okay. Next, look. Who among the following have received the final license to operate as payment aggregator? That is, recently, some banking institutions have obtained a payment aggregator license. If you ask, payment aggregator. Then, you apply the exam. Okay, IBPS clerk's exam. When you operate the payment, there is an option for a razor pay. There is an interface for a razor pay. Okay, that is a payment aggregator. The amount we give is the amount in our hands. IBPS gets the interface for a IBPS payment aggregator. There are a lot of companies that are paying aggregators. It is a lot of payment aggregators. Recently, some institutions, banking platforms have obtained payment aggregator license. The license is given to RBI. Okay, all the licenses are given to RBI. Recently, the payment aggregator award is... Who is this person? Or which payment platform is the payment platform of these three people? Justpay is present. Decentralization is present. Both A and B are the options. All of them are the answer. Okay, justpay, Decentralization, Zoho. All of them have obtained payment aggregator license. Okay, this is a financial startup. Financial startup, what is it? This is a financial startup. That is, it is provided by financial companies. It is a startup for technology. It is a startup for fintech. Okay, if it is a Zoho. Financial companies provide Zoho's technology. Okay, that is fintech, financial technology. Financial technology is a startup. This is justpay, Decentralization, Zoho. Now, who is the payment aggregator? When we calculate the exam fees, we see a razor pay. Now, we can see justpay, Decentralization, Zoho. We can see it. Okay. This is the main things. Okay. Next, look. Who launched a web portal of CMPFO? Namely, CKS developed and designed by Center for Development of Advanced Computing, CDAC and R&amp;D Organization of MIT. MIT is the Minister of Electronics and Information Technology. It is MIT. Okay, the R&amp;D of MIT is CDAC. Center for Development of Advanced Computing. This is recently, CKS is a platform. A web portal is starting. If we ask, this is for coal mining. People are asking for a work. They want enhancement. CKS. Okay, who is launching CKS? Designing and developing is CDAC. CDAC is the Minister of Electronics and Information Technology's R&amp;D organization. CDAC is designing CKS. But, if we ask, who is launching CKS in this web portal? Who is it? Prahla Joshi is launching CKS. Who is Prahla Joshi? The union minister of coal mine and parliamentary affairs is Prahla Joshi. Okay, I am talking about coal. Coal field workers work. People want enhancement. They want empowerment. CKS is a portal. So, this portal is connected to this field. The union minister is launching it. It is for coal miners. The union minister is Prahla Joshi. This is the one that is revealing. Then, you should think. Okay, what is the scheme? Who is launching it? If you are confused, you will think. Whatever the scheme is, the ministry or the union minister is related. 98% of it is inaugurated. Only some questions are not inaugurated. The Minister of State is inaugurated. Similarly, only some schemes are inaugurated. The prime minister is inaugurated. The rest of 98% is related to the ministry. It is inaugurated. So, who is launching CKS? Or who is launching the web portal? Prahla Joshi. Similarly, the union minister is... If you ask, who is Prahla Joshi? Okay, who is... Which platform is CKS developing? Or designing? If you ask, it is CDAC. CDAC's full form is Center for Development of Advanced Computing. This is the R&amp;D organization of MIT. It is CDAC. Okay, now, the questions are on this topic. Okay, now, let us say. Who is the union minister of Electronics and Information Technology? Who is it? Ashwini Vaishnavan. Okay. Ashwini Vaishnavan is the minister of Electronics and Information. Sorry, her arm is CDAC. Now, they are launching CKS. That is, Prahla Joshi. Okay. This is the current first session. I have heard that there are 15 questions in February. That is, February 25 is the main exam for the SP clerk. 15 days are important questions. 25 questions we have discussed. But, each question is 3-4 questions. We get it. However, 75 to 80 questions we can create. Then, you should make it useful. If you have any questions, you should ask the exam. This is not the SP clerk. The SEC exams are also used in the SEC. It is very useful. If you like this video, please like. If you have doubts, you can relate to the current affairs. Or if you have doubts related to the exams. If you have doubts, you can comment. If you think it is useful, you can share. Okay, next video, we will see. New content. It is so that we revise the sessions. We will see in the next video. See you. Take care. Bye.